Good morning. We have a small but mighty group this morning. Please introduce yourself in the chat. I think we all know each other from the yesterday's meeting. But add one unusual or interesting way you landed a client or a contract. I'm going to give a quick example. I've been partnering recently, one with an insurance provider and one with a financial advisor. Because the financial advisor wants to keep the companies compliant, and I do a lot of HR consulting work. So he has been sending me loads of work, and then those clients have been word of mouth telling their friends. So I have not had to do any much marketing in the last few months.
Nice. Yeah, that's a great example.
Well, I got a referral, and it was in Oakland. I was living in Palm Springs. Didn't think it was, it was just like they wanted an hour training. They wanted everything, you know, like impossible to deliver. Well, I passed it on to my colleague who I also can do some consulting with up in Oakland. And that client has, I can't even tell you how much work she's gotten through that one thing that you just never know.
You never know.
Absolutely. Oh, Amelia, who is this beautiful boy? Oh, welcome. We love young learners. Welcome, welcome.
This is Mateo. He's sick. He's just saying goodbye to his birthday at school.
All right. All right.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Can I tell you one quick story of a great, of an outreach, Rayanne?
Sure.
So with all this COVID stuff, I've reached out to all of the associations that I've done live presentations for in the past. And I've offered them webinars. And those associations are of course filled with employers. And, and I've gotten quite a bit of new work from that, from just doing a free webinar, but it goes to 200, you know, different employers. And then I always put something in there, we'll talk about this later, but I always put something in there that they need to go to my website and download as a, as a value add. And then I've been able to communicate with them and follow up, which is really nice.
Wonderful. All right. Does everybody have a chance to share? We're going to move on. Hopefully we'll share some more great ideas because we really need your best practices here. Today we'll be talking about how to articulate your unique value proposition. And we'll brainstorm some ideas for email funnels and opt-ins. I know some of us find those annoying. But I know I have actually signed up for several paid subscriptions after signing up through an email funnel or opt-in. We'll look at our course descriptions, how well they're capturing attention, and, and how can we make them more compelling? And finally, we'll practice following up with clients. How do we get additional sales? And Claire has done a webinar for CE TAP on closing the sale. She will give you some phenomenal tips on how to really seal the deal. Next. Our MIT, we hope you will be inspired to create your unique value proposition for your target market and to craft compelling messages to promote your products and services. I always tell my students, sometimes it's just one word that triggers an emotional response or positive image in the mind that makes me say, I want to know more. Claire mentioned this yesterday about the growth of e-learning, 900% in the last 19 years. And training leads to higher revenue per employee. So we always, there was a study by, I believe it was Deloitte, that said for every dollar of training, the company reaps a minimum of $5. I saw another study that said $13. Bottom line is every dollar spent results in revenue for the company. It's not a drain, and that's how we have to sell it. As, almost like medicine, I call it sometimes. I tell people, this keeps your organization healthy. Next. All right, our first activity, let's get started. We'll be going into breakout rooms. This actually happened, I got this activity from my friend who is also a trainer. She was on an airplane, started talking to a gentleman, and she wound up with a huge contract. So you're on a plane, just received an upgrade on first class. Woman next to you sits down, you notice what she's reading. She works for an organization you'd like to approach for business. She says, what do you do? What do you say? What's your pitch?
I, this is Jonathan. I think we are probably just getting underway for some folks with some of the things that they were sharing.
Not enough time? Okay. Well, do we have maybe one or two?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to share, I thought something that came out in our group was this idea of you know, conversation and pitch. And Suzie was just telling us as, as we were finishing the group, you know, to start with that kind of small talk and make the connection.
Yeah.
And before making any kind of, of a pitch. And Wendy was bringing up, asking some thoughtful questions.
Yeah.
Engage and see where they're at.
Yeah.
Great idea. There's a concept in communication we call dig times three. You ask the first question, oh, I see you're reading about emotional intelligence. Is that something you're interested in? And then say, oh, no, I'm a training director. Oh, that's interesting. I've been a training director, you know, what do you do? You know, and so you keep digging into the conversation and creating, you know, common ground. So that's really great. And that's, that's exactly what my friend did. She said, we wound up talking the whole plane ride from LA to Oakland. And by the end of the time, she had his phone number and promised him a contract. So she said it was great.
That's fantastic.
All right. So think about every opportunity, not only that, even to tell your friends on LinkedIn or wherever you're posting, let people know what you do and show your passion for it. And I think a lot of times people will flock to you rather than you having to outreach to them.
Right.
All right. I love that. Create common ground, dig times three. Well, today we're going to really focus on what value do you bring to your clients? What's special? We all deliver contract education, soft skills, hard skills. But what is our promise? What do we offer them that other companies don't? And I've recently been in contact with a new company. I don't know how new they are, but it's called Open Sesame. I'm not sure how many of you, you know them, but they're, they're really pitching that their material is very short, concise, and exactly what you need. So that when you're pitching your UVP, how is your product solving a problem or improving a situation? What value are you offering? What benefits of using your product or service? Sometimes being small is better. I had a great fortune of getting a large contract with a very large company. And I found out that when I pitched, I was actually one of five companies pitching. And they were like AMA and, you know, big companies. And I asked them why they chose me. And they said it wasn't price, which I was worried about, I was too cheap. But it was the fact that I was local and available and, you know, accessible. So thinking about what is your value? How are you different or distinct? Quick example, I'll give you recently, I was asked to do a sexual harassment workshop. These are kind of my bread and butters. But state of California has now put the one hour training online for free. Anybody can do it online. So when my client called me, I said, you do know this is free. I don't want to charge you for something you could get for free. And they said, no, we want you to do it because we want you to add our specific examples. This is what's happened recently. Can you add that in without identifying the person who did or said that? And, and that's exactly what I did. Real quick on that, I got a call from the CEO after the session who said, that was exactly what we needed. I'm sending your, your contact information to my counterpart in Southern California because they need the same training. So that's the kind of thing we want, we want to happen, right? What are you doing? We're customizing it. We're creating scenarios that are relative to your organization. People are going to say, that doesn't happen here. Great examples of UVPs, Uber, smartest way to get around, short. Think about, you know, Nike's slogans, just do it, three words. Highly memorable. Do you have a slogan? Do you have a value proposition? Slack, all your tools, one place. All right. So let's think about that. Let's define it. Which customers are we targeting? Why? What do we offer them? For example, Claire and I, when we were contract education providers in the Fremont area, we had New United Motors, which was a Toyota affiliate. And we really presented ourselves as experts in manufacturing, especially automotive. We focused on those. Those were huge clients. We wound up getting very large contracts with them because we focused on their needs. What is it that they need? We knew that their workers, especially in manufacturing, most of them didn't have a college degree. We were going to take the lingo down to fifth grade level for all of our training. We were going to make it hands-on, et cetera. And then which price? Claire talked a lot about this. Is it a premium price? Are they paying for something very special? They're in a leadership program, only five spots available. You're going to pay $1,500 or $2,000 for that training. Are you offering discounts? I like to go back to what Claire said yesterday, too. Too many options. There was a study done with Costco with jam where they had 18 flavors of jam that people could sample. They sold very little jam. They brought it down to three different flavors and jam went out the door. So people are overwhelmed when you give them, and sometimes I used to do that. I would say, oh, you could do this, or you could do this, or you could do this. And they would just say, oh, we need to think about it. So be careful with too many discounts. I made that mistake many times. I don't know if anybody has. Well, we'll talk a little bit about pricing later, but I feel that sometimes we undervalue ourselves. Okay, next. All right, another breakout room. I'll give you a little more time this time, about 10 minutes. But you might want to just focus, there's three questions. You might want to focus just on the one that you feel is the most important. What needs are your products, services, features fulfilling? What is your why when you're selling them? How do you promote that? How do you state it? What you can do for these clients? And are you targeting, I think we talked a little bit about this, are you targeting a specific industry and if so, why? I know a lot of us are targeting those with ETP funds. And what have you done lately to make sure you're charging the right price? Have you done any analysis, cost comparisons? Have you talked to the client? Sometimes clients will tell me, you're way too cheap. I'm like, okay, thanks for that info. Have you requested information from the client?
That was a fantastic, that was a fascinating conversation.
Yeah, I agree. We had a, we had an interesting, I only attended one of the rooms, but there was an interesting conversation of do we value what we are worth? And if our price is too low, will the customer value us?
Right.
So I love the, the information we're getting in the chats as well.
One of the things that I, if I may, just one of the things we were just talking about is kind of take, tie, tying back to what we did yesterday. And it's about, as a contractor, how you partner with the college. So I'm the instructor, let's say. How do I partner with the college who's partnering with the, the client to influence the value of the package, right? So what we charge, if we're independent contractors, if we're teach, if we're the teachers, right? And how do we, how do we partner there so we can, we can make it a win-win-win? Like give the greatest package for the client, but enhance the overall value of it and actually get maybe a little bigger slice of the pie for having done that. Like really showing up as a full partner in that process. I mean, and not every college is going to be open to that, but I think it's, it's a pretty cool approach.
And, oh, go ahead. I was just jumping in with somebody had said, where can you find pricing information? And a lot of these companies or websites actually list the price. And you can see for like a Fred Pryor seminar, yes, it's $199 per person, but you're having, you know, 20 people in that room. Or you'll see, you'll see like some of the premium places, they'll say $2,100, $2,200 per person. And that, I'll give you one real quick example. I worked at Facebook many years ago, maybe eight, nine years ago. And I was delivering a four-hour class for a company in New York. They were charging Facebook $2,400 for a four-hour class eight years ago. Okay, so that, that, that's, you know, those are the kinds of, that's the kind of information you need to understand what you're up against.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Sorry, I'm turning it back to Claire and anyone else who wants to chime in.
Well, Emilio had a really interesting, has a really interesting experience about how he differentiates himself in the healthcare space. Would you, do you mind sharing that?
Sure. I, I'm sorry, I need to work on my elevator speech. I don't know how to just say all this in a few words. But the program that I'm working on, so I'm a trainer for, for View College, but I'm, I'm doing this project on the side on my own. And it's, I'm helping the local hospital that has the, the regional cancer center for Northern California, for this state here, for this counties here in the north. So I'm working with the program coordinator to restructure the support program for patients. So the, the current situation is that the hospital itself and the professionals, they, they don't see the value. They don't understand what a support program means for, for cancer patients. The, the patients themselves, they don't fully understand what it is. So the result is that most hospitals have no program at all altogether, as UC Davis in Sacramento.
Yeah.
Or they have like minimal, minimal budgets, like which for me is almost an insult to the patient. So I have a firsthand experience dealing with, with a condition, being a cancer patient and overcoming. So in my journey and my process, I learned a lot of things, and especially I saw this gap. And I, and I can know, I cannot stand that nobody's knew anything about it. I think that people who are going through the condition, if they learn basic skills to how self-regulate themselves and go through the process, not in a state of panic and fear, but with a sense of empowerment or agency, you can transform the experience, how they live the process, and also increase the chances of a better outcome.
See, I, I love that, Emiliano, and thank you for sharing because when, when Emiliano was telling his story, I was thinking, he's trying to sell, he's trying to create a market. He's trying to create something here within the hospital that does not exist yet, but his personal experience is that very unique value proposition. Like what he brings to that is so unique and special. And if he can capture that, you know, in, in the proposal and in his pitch to the hospital administration, that's where, that, that's where he's going to get that foot in the door. So really understanding the needs of the patient there in a way that even the, even the doctors may or may not understand, you know? So anyway, so thank you for sharing, Emiliano. I want to, I appreciate, I appreciate your story.
And what I gathered from that too is speaking, speaking to clients' language as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. I, I noticed some, some things in the chat is that we're, we already talked about online, offline resources. If anyone has anything to share that they use, that where they, where they find information. Jonathan actually shared that he met someone on a panel and he was able to do thousands of, of dollars. I'd like to get at least one more example of, you know, from, from the breakout. How are you, how are you stating your value proposition, or if you're targeting, or if you're pricing, using different pricing models? And I know Jonathan and I have gone back and forth on pricing models. I really like when I'm involved as the trainer, because a lot of times, I know, I know you guys are great as directors, but a lot of times people don't realize what's involved. And sometimes we have to educate the client. We're going to have to do a needs assessment. We're going to have to talk to the people who are having the biggest issues, you know? We're going to have to do some research on what other companies are doing in this, in this situation. So I think the more we could break it down and show the value and that why we're charging this price versus just, oh, we're charging you $10,000. They're like, what, what are we getting for that? And again, going back to the value stack, you're going to get the class, you're going to get the coaching, and you have access to our website, whatever it is. And I think you can charge more. And I think the goal is not to get more clients, but to get more business with each client.
Right.
I think too that we don't put enough time in for prep. Like you were saying, the research, that piece of it, that's your time, and your time is valuable. And I think especially as women, women always undervalue. You know, when I worked as a recruiter, I just saw, women never asked for the money. And it's like, we need, you know, I mean, it's just astounding to me how we don't negotiate on, on our own behalf.
Well, absolutely.
Well, you know, I gotta share, I'm going to share one little quick win that I got just yesterday afternoon after our class. And I've been working with this client and they want to do this whole series of online courses, which is awesome. But traditionally, they haven't had very good attendance. And so what I did this time is I said, look, all this stuff about reaching out and, and compelling people to come and et cetera, this takes time, effort, and energy. Why don't you pay me to do it? So it's like a win-win. So I, I charged a nice, pretty hefty sum for writing the descriptions, writing the emails, setting up the, the opt-in page. And now I get to communicate directly with the client, with the participants, so that I can enhance their experience. So we all win. Like I get paid for something that helps them be successful and helps me get the next contract. You know, it's, I, that was a good day. I got to tell you. This is just a way that I want you to be thinking about these things. We can add value. And we should charge for it. And, and if we, and if we lay it out and we say what we're adding and how much they would normally have to spend on it, and but this is what we're charging, we actually are positioning ourselves in a really powerful way.
So you were helping them, right?
100%.
You were, you were helping them market then. You were.
I am helping them market internally.
Internally, right, right. Yeah, okay. And that's what this session is about, because I think writing a compelling course description and getting people to come to the training, that's going to show value to your client. If you offer a webinar and only 10 people show up, they're going to say, why didn't they come? Oh, they're too busy. But if you write the description in a way that this hour is going to make my life easier, I'm going to have a skill, I'm going to do my job better, whatever it is, I, you'll get, you'll get more people to come. So I think we have to offer those marketing services. Kind of this is what this workshop is about. How can we do that better? What can we offer? I often, especially a lot of my clients, you know, and I don't, I want to say this sensitively, are English second language. And English is not their first language. So I see the emails that go out and they're confusing. So I will offer to write the emails that announce goes out to the whole company for them. And got much better success having attendance at those sessions.
Yeah, one thing I've done on a contract too is like, I put in a little bit of a safety net. Cause I know certain things are going to go over what we've budgeted for. So there's kind of a, I hate to use this word because it sounds like I'm not being honest, but there's kind of a fudge factor a little bit. And I've also had no problem going back to the client and said, this is what we originally agreed on, but here's all the other things you're asking for, and so we need to reprice that. And people sometimes get really afraid to ask for the money. And I think especially in the Bay Area where people charge unbelievable amounts of money. Like I've seen coaching hours that just like, wow, they're paying that. That was during the heydays. And it's like, you don't want to underprice yourself because like you were saying, Rayanne, you don't, you don't, you know, they want, they want to feel like, oh, they're so cheap, not cheap, but they're not so inexpensive. They can't be effective. And that's not the case at all. It's just sometimes we're, we don't, we don't know how to ask for the money.
Absolutely. All right. So let's make sure we're all asking and learning from each other. I, I would, you know, might even think about after this training, how we could share some of those marketing messages with each other. I think that would be cool to have a repository that we could build from. All right, customize, ask for copies, policies. Okay, yeah. The more you can customize, the better, Milton says. The more you can talk their language. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right. So I know that a lot of us don't have, and I'm not sure how much control you have over your webpages and all your marketing materials. And some of us, you know, we sometimes see this, people asking us for our email. You're thinking, oh, no, I don't want any more in my email. I don't want to have any more subscriptions. But building an email funnel, and Claire's going to talk a little bit about this because she does this really well. How do we gather email from people who, who might be interested in our products or services? And how do we give them something for that email? Because people are not going to give it up for something that, that they don't find valuable. Here's a quick example. There's a company called HR, I forgot the, Expert HR, it's with an X. And when I first saw their, their email message to me, it said, download a free HR checklist to make sure your company is compliant. I'm like, oh, I want that. So I gave them my email, and ever since then, they've actually sent me some really valuable content and offered me webinars. But of course, they're trying to sell me on their services. That's an example of an email funnel. It was something they knew based on my profile that I was interested in. So it's got to build interest and it will create a sequence. This is what Claire mentioned as being very important. Once you lock, you opt in or you give them your email, then you get an email right away that says, thank you for joining. This is what you're going to get. We're not going to bother you. You can manage how many times you want to hear from us or whatever it is. So it feels like it's personalized. And then, once you give them, and like we talked about the value step, value stack, we're giving them more and more information. They become your customers. They'll say, hey, you know, I know I've been getting your stuff for a long time. We need this class. So try to think about how you can build an email funnel. And Claire is an example of how email funnels are like online dating.
Well, you just want to think about it this way, like when you first, I, I think if you first meet someone, right? And they're instantly saying like, hi, you know, will you marry me? You know, it's, it's a little off-putting, right? But, but if you nurture the relationship and you get to know each other a little bit, they, you know, they get to know you, you get to know them a little bit. Then, you know, your relationship grows at a, in a healthy, stable way. So that's just a, an example I heard and one of my people I follow on the online space, and, and I love it. But you think about how like in the olden day, well, not olden days, I still do this. It's not olden days, but you know, when you go and you give a live presentation, what I would do is I would, I'd do a giveaway and I would collect business cards. I mean, we love to do that, right? So somebody can get, you know, a discount on coaching or access to one of your community ed classes or something like that. Or maybe you have some swag that you like to give away when you go and do things live. This is the same thing. It's just in the online version of it. You, the easiest thing is when you do some kind of, like I said, a webinar, when I was doing a webinar just a week and a half ago. You know, you get, you ask people, hey, if you want to be in this raffle for this, put your email address in the chat, or you collect email addresses by saying, hey, you know, so you've just had this great webinar. There's actually something that I didn't have time to include, but it's really high value. Just go to this, this opt-in page, which we're going to talk about, go to this link and give me your email. And I will immediately send you this PDF. Sorry, we didn't have time to go through this today, but I think you'll find this very valuable. This is the next step in, you know, that if we'd had more time, we would have gone there. So go click this link and get that next step. And so if people can do it right at the moment, this is a way that you then say thank you, and then you give them the value, and then you follow up and you ask more about their needs. And you can automate all this with the right kind of system. So, I mean, and if you don't have an automated system, you just do it by emailing the person and getting connected. And, and that's okay too. But the email sequence should, should eventually lead to something that you ask for a sale. Because if you believe in your products, you should be selling your products. So in a sense, that's what I like to keep remembering. Like if I believe in what I'm doing, then I should just talk about it. And I should give people a chance to opt in and be, and partner with me on it.
All right. So we, we're collecting emails. What's our next step? Opt-ins, capture forms. I did a lot of research on this because I'm wondering, how do these companies get all of this information from us? They know who we are, how many, because a lot of times when you want to even attend a free, I attend a lot of HR webinars. Like what's the new law? And now with COVID. like what's the new law, and now with COVID, how to return to work. But you have to give them, you know, the name of your company, how many employees you have, uh what's your role, are you a decision maker? So they capture all that information about you before you can join the free webinar. So I'm not sure if any of you are using something like this, it's a good way to create a database that you can go out. I remember years ago, Claire and I, when we worked again in Contract Ed together, we did a survey on needs assessments for companies. We wanna know what your needs are in the next year, in the next five years, how the college might be able to help you to fulfill those needs. We actually got a lot of business out of that, some very big contracts, because they felt they were helping us not only develop curriculum for the college, but they were helping us to prepare them for this future. So thinking about how we can capture this information, we want their name and and of course their email. It could be anywhere on the site. I know a lot of times I feel like the ambulance chasers when I go online, especially like you type in sexual harassment, and they're like, do you need a lawyer? And you're like, no, and I click off. So you wanna be careful where these pop up and really keep track of where people are giving you the information. Is it on as clear will give away, closing the sale, here's my PDF, here's what you can do. I want that. I'm gonna go ahead and give her all the information so that I can get that document, which I perceive is valuable. So if, for example, uh if you were creating a marketing funnel to sell a writing webs- workshop, you could create a webpage called Get Faster Results With These Five Surefire Methods. And then they would, if they opt in, they would get those five methods. And then with that, you'd say, learn more in the full webinar, or get your own. I I found for my writing uh classes, the best response I get is, "I will assess your writing style and tell you exactly what you need to be more powerful." People wanna be more powerful. Are you not getting results when you send an email? Are people not responding? I give them that pain point. Here are five surefire ways people will respond to you. All right, without raising hackles or something. You gotta make it visual.
Yeah, yeah, love that.
All right, next. Bottom line, is it opt-in, is reciprocity. I read an article once about a company, a car company, when they were selling cars, they would always come out with a Coke or food for the person buying the car, right? And people would say like, oh, they gave me something, I need to buy the car from this person. There's this idea of you owe me, 'cause I gave you something. So we, we don't wanna manipulate that, but it's, it's a common feeling of people. If I get something from you, I wanna return the favor. So thinking about how we can get potential uh customers to, to fulfill their needs and let them know that you're providing some kind of value that they need right away and that they can use right now.
It it goes back to the thing we talked about before, that people wanna work with someone that they know, like and trust. And when you give them something of value, and then you nurture the relationship through some communication, they begin to know, like and trust you. So they're, they're much more likely to come to you when they have the need that you fulfill.
Absolutely. Are any of you using opt-ins or email pages? Anybody? Not yet? Oh, Carolyn is. And how is that working for you? Have you get, have you had clients?
Mine's rusty, um but yes, I I have a, an ebook that I give away, a marketing ebook. And then um, you know, I've got a series, but I need to go back and actually, now that you're saying this, is dust off my emails and see what the series looks like. But it is true, because some people have been on my list forever and they'll show up on my webinars and they'll, you know, they'll open the emails, I can tell as I'm tracking people. So it creates that loyalty factor.
Absolutely, great. Now let's go back to email funnels and value stacks. How do they relate? Who would, who remembers this from yesterday, that beautiful value stack? We're all working on those, right? Our PDFs, our, yeah, our quizzes, anything that we can give. It's very interesting that people always tell me they love the quizzes. I I find that interesting. For example, with emotional intelligence, how emotionally intelligent am I? Oh my goodness, my, my score is low, I better take this class. You know, and and so I I find people really like it when it's very personal. And then the value stack could be that way. Here's your personal report. And for the rest of the report, I don't know if any of you've ever taken like Myers-Briggs or any of these other types of assessments, leadership assessment. They give you the basics, but if you wanna see the whole report, you gotta pay for it. And that might be something for you to think about as well. Here's the quiz, here's how our class is gonna help you develop those leaders. Here's the six areas of leadership you should be proficient in. You scored, you didn't score well so well in these two. Here's two that you could take separately, or you could take the whole program for maximum value. All right. Oh, I like that, MBTI and DISC, yes. So if you already, and again, those are things you add value into your trainings. People have this assessment before they come to the training, and I think it really helps to make it personal for them. And it gives them a reason to attend. All right, we're gonna keep this very short, I'm gonna try to time it. Jonathan said make sure I'm timing these, so that we stay. If you have the space and authority to post an opt-in message on your me- on your website, where would you place it? Front page, in the, in a course description, wherever? And what might you offer a potential client in exchange for all the information they're gonna give you? Simple, short opt-in. What would you offer? Doing. Who would like to share? 'Cause I heard some great stuff.
We were having a great conversation in our group, and um, and again, I'm sorry, Emiliano, I'm, I'm calling on you a lot, but he's in the process right now of working on his website and and building this in, which is so opportune, right? So um, that's what we want. We wanna make sure we have something where if somebody's visiting our website, that we can keep in touch with them.
All right, yeah, gotta keep that, high touch, they call it. What else?
Absolutely.
What else?
I have a question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I have a question, um and I don't know, this could be there to anyone or to Claire. Um, do you keep up with all of these emails and things of yourself, um things opt-in, you know, yourself, or do you hire someone to do that? I think my problem is my bandwidth, and I am in the midst of interviewing VAs right now, um virtual assistants, and so uh to help with that, but I just was wondering, how do you manage that?
Yeah, yeah, Desiree, if there's, if you've got, um so I've recently hired a virtual assistant who is a fantastic writer. And um, so we have worked together and started, she's, she's, she's done a really exceptional job, I think, of reading my past stuff and and then kind of finding my voice, you know? So I'm shocked, I I'm shocked by her efficiency, but what I'll do is I'll sketch out um the ideas at the ideal level and I'll say, okay, so I wanna go from here to here to here, and here's some stories. And then she gives me a framework, and she says, Claire, I need a story here, I need a this there, blah, blah, blah. And so we co-write things. And um, that is, uh that's, that's worked out pretty well, but I still have a huge hand in it, and I see every single thing that goes out. She doesn't, I mean, she, not on the social media side, I don't, I don't, I don't click the approve button on everything, because we've gotten to that place. But in terms of my emails, I absolutely have, I still have a lot of, um, I I still have ninety percent control over what's happening in my emails, for sure.
Is she full? Does she need some, another client?
She might, she's really good. I'm talking to her later this afternoon, so I'll ask, okay?
Please do, please do.
Claire, you're gonna get a lot of requests for uh, for the services though.
I know, she's very good.
I actually hired a virtual assistant uh yesterday or a couple of days ago too, because you have to decide, how much time do I have and what am I going to get, and am I, is my time more valuable? So this is another thing that goes back to pricing. Are we charging enough so that we can get the help? And we're not, uh it, for me, I'm at three o'clock in the morning, I'm still working, right? You don't want that.
Right.
All right, who else? I know, who else?
For a virtual assistant, a price range per hour?
You know, I'm, I'm paying twenty-five an hour.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think I'm paying like thirty-eight.
I was gonna say, I've been seeing twenty-five as if more, like I've been interviewing, like I said, it's twenty-five is more like administrative.
Right.
Um but if you want somebody to kinda get into your brain, like Claire was explaining, and really have those writing skills and those other abilities, it's more about forty dollars, like Claire was saying.
Mine is, mine is very, I I don't think there's a lot of thinking to do, but probably about making it more.
Yeah, it's more, yeah.
Thank you. Any, any other thoughts on that? We've gotta move on, but wanna make sure that you're thinking about, can I create an opt-in? Where am I going to be collecting? Because before, we would go to workshops or, or, uh I don't know if you attended association. Somebody was talking to me about, you know, uh I I belong to a group called the HR Connection, the Silicon Valley Human Resources uh work group, we're all, all HR managers in that group. So a lot of times, you wanna get that information, they're having a webinar. How do you get on as a speaker, so that you could collect those beautiful addresses of all those human resource managers who actually can be decision makers on the training? So thinking about, how can you create an opt-in for that? Let them attend a free workshop that they need, maybe a thirty-minute workshop. Recently, I saw returning to work after COVID, what you need to know about employee rights. Like, wow, I better go to that. All right, we're gonna move on. This is probably my favorite part, and I know Carolyn has a lot of experience with marketing, so is Claire. But these are easy formulas when we're trying to get people motivated. We use the PAS, P-A-S, format, which is problem, agitate, solve the problem. Quick example, your workforce is unmotivated, will your profit suffer? Keep your staff engaged to motivate it with online training.
Love it.
Yeah. The four Ps, picture, promise, prove, push. People love alliteration, right? Training, you got a picture of somebody bored, like zooming, they're playing games, or you know, like some of my students putting up a paddle in front of their face. More interaction equals more learning. See how Company X retained key employees with our customized leadership program. Call today for an obligation trial. So give them a picture, give them a promise, prove that it works, somebody else did it, push them to engage. Very short. This could be on a webpage, could be on an email. And the third one is, most of you've ever taken a basic marketing class will know this, A-I-D-A. Attention, Interest, Desire, Action. Usually, there's another one after that, Satisfaction. But two hundred percent growth, it's possible. What's the secret? Online training tailored to your needs. Attend our free lunch and learn session on topic, topic, topic. Call today, enroll now. All right, a lot of times, it's very interesting, they did a survey. Uh I don't know, I took a lot of marketing classes, but when they add it, operators are standing by or limited, you know, only, only twenty people are allowed into the session. People feel like this urgency. So sometimes we need to create more of a sense of urgency, 'cause people go, oh, I'll do it another time, or it's being offered. Even be careful when you're offering it uh multiple times, 'cause people go, oh, I'll sign up later, and they never do. So this is a one-time offering, or we're only offering one this month. I think Claire, you wrote something recently about that in one of your emails, about one of the sessions, like the Leadership Academy. This is the last time it will be offered this year. I was like, whoa, I better sign up, right? I don't wanna wait till next year, that's a long time.
Yeah, a little bit of urgency is important, 'cause otherwise, there's no reason to do it now. And if we can put it off, we put it off. That's general human nature.
And it's another way also to sell your trainers. Well, this trainer is really busy, she's our best one. If you want it, you have to have it now. So I don't know if that's, again, you don't wanna lie to them, but you wanna give them a little bit of sense of urgency.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna actually do an exercise around this. I know, we're gonna do this alone first, before we go into a breakout. And I think I might actually mix up the breakouts this time. Step one, use one of the formulas, and I'll put, and Claire, you need to access the formulas, just hit the button now, there you go. Use one of the formulas to the right to create a compelling statement. How will you open an email? So hopefully, when you leave the session, you're gonna say, I already have this, or we're gonna share with each other, I'm gonna send this out today. Don't forget about us. Um think about your most requested training. Then, do this before you go into your breakout room. Then with your group, you're gonna get the best statement of the group, so that we share it with the whole group, so that we actually have five great statements when we leave. And then one person from the group, you're gonna share it, it'd be great if you could put it in the chat. So words method, all right? We're gonna set up the breakout rooms. We're gonna give you, I'm looking at my time here. Uh, yeah, we actually have a good amount of time. Let's give you eight minutes. I think that was the most fun one I've sat in. Veronica has a fabulous one to share with us. Is Veronica back on?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, so we are, uh this is for a camera confidence class. And um, we're using the four Ps, the picture, promise, prove and push. And um, so we'll have a picture of, um, it's a picture of a dog doing, doing a Zoom in front of his computer, and his hair is like all skittering out and everything, and in a panic, 'cause he doesn't have the confidence. So it's, the caption is, are you Zoom ready? Do you know how to present your best self online? Join our TV expert who has the secrets to your success. Uh, join the five-week training to learn tricks of the trade, lighting, camera comp, and then so forth about the training. We're working on the actual language verbiage.
I love it. She can almost record that, right? A little recording. What did we think about that? Cool, right?
Love it.
All right.
And and apparently, that imagery of the dog, like that's one of the really highly, uh, I mean, that animals, animal images get a lot of views, so.
That's right, absolutely. All right, one more?
Yeah.
And we, we, we have, we have about a half an hour left, and there's, we still wanna cover great course descriptions. How do we get people to buy what we're, buy our best products?
We talked a lot about, um, we, we live, we kinda just stayed on the headline piece, in a sense, in our group, and we played with a whole bunch of different ways of getting to a headline for the, um, for a training on trust. That Mina, Mina was actually talking about that, so that was pretty cool.
All right, yeah, and 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 really parse the, the words down. I, you know, you guys know I love to teach business writing, and I always say, less is more when it comes to writing, because the less, you know, our brains, they, our brains would prefer a picture anyway, but our words have to create a picture. Use words that have emotional content, that people could easily understand what you're talking about. I see words like interface with customers. I don't know, are you, are we sewing? Are we getting to, what are we interfacing? All right. Anyone else? Last one, we gotta move on? Nele, I see your, your, your lid up there. Did you wanna share something? No? I don't know.
Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and share. In, in our group, um, I had really great feedback that kinda helped tailor the one that I'd been working on. And so um, when I developed it, I did the uh, the PAS, the Problem Agitate Solve formula. And so um, the, the one that I designed was for a, a training that we have designed for uh new supervisors or leads that are transitioning into their role. And so I, I wrote, um, newly promoted, feeling anxious about your new role. Learn how to gain your confidence to lead in from buddy to boss.
Nice, great, yes. You hit my emotion. That's exactly how I'm feeling. I'm not ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, are you ready to lead? Do you have the confidence it takes to lead your team? Yeah, that's a big one today. Yeah, I think, I think new leadership is a great class, because so many hope, I don't know, but I think a lot of people are retiring now, the baby boomers, that's one of, I'm, I'm a baby boomer myself. So I think a lot of people are thinking about retiring. We wanna make sure people are ready to step up, yeah. And that's another way we can also contact HR managers. Do you have people on the bench? Do you have people ready to step up? If not, make sure your bench strength, and you know, like using the If not, make sure you're bench strength, and you know, like using the baseball metaphor and theme is often, you know, depending on if you know that, especially if you know that person loves baseball. Again, we could do a little stalking on their LinkedIn page too, to find out a little bit about them, and what might really get their attention. All right. That's it? We need to move on unless anyone else has a compelling one to share? All right. So, we're actually gonna skip the chat here because I want to get into the next section, but these are just a couple of tips. What's the burning question? What is the question that everyone wants to say? Yes, can you get them to say, yes, I'm anxious? I worry about my emotional intelligence. I don't know how to write well. I write too long, it takes me too long. Get right to the point, keep it simple. We're gonna have one hour, you're gonna cut the fluff. We promise that your emails will go from two screens to one, just with these tips. Promise that it'll be pain-free, or it's an amazing offer. Provide proof if you can, testimony, or comments from people who are satisfied. And I see a lot of times people don't want to put the name of the person or the organization. I feel that doesn't lend as much credibility. Hopefully you can get actual statements from people that have companies that have a lot of credibility as well. So ask, I know Jonathan does a great job of this. He's recently redesigned our website for the Seminole Community College District, you guys can take a look at that. But he's done a really nice job with providing social proof and testimony from our clients. Gonna move on. Interface, I sew. Marla said, that's okay, Marla, I'm sharing your private, she goes, Rayanne, that interface joke did not land, it's only landed with sewers. But that's why my kids tell me, mom, no jokes, no one gets them. All right. We're gonna move on to course descriptions. How do we write a compelling? Oh, I like this, Wendy's actually shared that, great. Compelling course descriptions, solve the problem. How are you helping them? What are you doing for them? Especially HR managers, we're overloaded. We have too much to do, but now they've added training to our workload. How do we help them make their workforce better? How do we help prevent them from losing key employees? What is the problem we're solving? Emotional words. What do the key employees want to do most? They want to be going or growing. That's what I always tell people. If they're not growing, they will be going. So we want to create that. We want to give them the skills they need to be successful in their jobs. We know that retaining a customer is always easier and less costly. I always watch Shark Tank, and they say, what is your customer acquisition cost? Do we know our customer acquisition cost? Have we done any research? What did it take for us to get that? And sometimes I think zero, they came to me through a referral. And other times I think, no, I've been working to try to get that. I remember once, one of my contract ed, higher-ups, I think it was a VP, he said, we always wanted to get into this company. We're challenging you to do that. Oh my goodness, that was a lot of work. I eventually got in, but I had to be persistent. I think they finally gave me the contract because they were sick of hearing from me. But you know, how much time, how much energy do you put into it? Focus on the benefits. Are they gonna save time? Are they gonna improve their career? Are they improving their skills? Are they gonna reduce waste? Know your lingo for your organization. For manufacturers, we always knew we wanted to cut their production time, cut their waste, improve their cycle of production, whatever it was specifically to that client, know what it is. And I love this fear of missing out. This is a big thing on social media now, is like, am I staying home, and do I have this thing, like I'm missing all this stuff that's going on without me? Well, there's also that in the client world. We only have so many trainers who are skilled in this concept, or like Claire did with her leadership, we're only offering it once this year. Give them a reason to propel them to action. All right, so I've got a couple of course descriptions on the next two pages, very quick examples. This example was an outreach. After I did a sexual harassment class, during the class, I asked the managers, I gave them scenarios, and I actually picked on people, and I would say like, Robin, tell me what you would do if an employee did this. And I remember at least two of the examples that manager said, I don't know what I would say, I don't know what I would do. And I would say, well, would you document the conversation? Like, oh, I don't usually do that. So I followed up with this email to the CEO, and I wound up with another contract after this, and it says, what happened, title managing performance, documenting discipline, what happens when employees are not meeting objectives and expectations? As a supervisor, you need to be adept at handling and documenting performance. The more you know about how to address and document, the less likely you will be involved in a lawsuit. There's the fear, right? And then in this interactive session, you're gonna learn blah, 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 space is limited, enroll today. One email with this sample course description, and I got another follow-up contract from the sexual harassment training. So thinking about how you can build on using that formula. Next. I just took this off the web because I was looking for, you know, like American Management Association, they sell a lot of training. I often go to these websites for inspiration. I look at what they're saying, how they're saying it. I will go to multiple sites to see how they're positioning, what the benefits are, what they're offering. I don't, I try not to copy. I really work very diligently at not copying it, but I will often use their structure. So this is an example. What do we love in the United States? We love fast action, you know, our pill's gotta work right away, okay? So the solution has to be immediate. Take this course, tell them very specifically what you want to do. Fill your skills gap, elevate your team and your career. They often use the dash, and I use this in my business writing class, use dashes like spice. It makes people focus into that area, but you don't want to overuse it because it'll water down your writing. So notice how they use the dash and the capital letters? So it's like emphasizing the voice and directing the eye to that content. So another class, but thinking about how we're gonna write it more powerfully. Next. All right. I think this is our last breakout because we are getting down to that time. We're gonna write how, we're gonna talk about how we're ensuring our descriptions meet the client's needs, and based on what you've learned today, what are you going to do differently about how you're writing or presenting your course descriptions? Or maybe you already have a great, this works for me, it's already working, let's share that. This is our time for sharing best practices. What did you guys come up with? Let's hear from you. What'd you talk about?
In our group, we talked a little bit about Milton's OSHA training, and just how the opportunity to talk about in your course description, we were talking about the cost. Like to say, first to say, a question could just be, are you OSHA compliant, right? But to spice that up by talking about the cost of not being OSHA compliant. So it kind of goes back to, and why not put that in the course description to just say, you know, on average, you know, the average mid-sized company, you know, pays, I'm just gonna, you know, $30,000 in penalties for being out of compliance. Join us for this short training, you know, at the low cost of $1,000 to ensure that you are getting fees, you know. So you could go that way, you could go, you know, what's the cost of an injured employee? You could go, I mean, there's so many ways to go to just, again, you don't want to be false about it, you don't want to falsify anything, that's for sure. But to spice it up, to add the emphasis, to say, what are we, what are you really going to get from this? What problem are you avoiding by doing this? And then here's the deadline, you know? So we talked about that, we didn't write a description as much as we talked about how to spice it up.
I love that, and even in the time of COVID, in the time of COVID, it's even more important to have your safety training in place. And there's more requirements now. Do you know what they are and how to make sure you're not fined? I love that. So make it as relevant as possible.
Absolutely.
Great, anyone else? You can always call me for ideas. Claire knows this. That was the joke in Contract Ed, it's like, I just want to be paid for ideas, I don't want to do anything. Ask me, I'll give you ideas, all right?
She's the best idea person ever.
We used to go to Starbucks, and Claire would be writing furiously, and I'd just like spouting out ideas.
Well, don't sell yourself too short. You're also someone who has an incredible bias towards action.
Oh, that's true.
You get a lot of great stuff done too.
Three in the morning. All right, anybody else? That's it?
I love that you said, that you said, use the client's words in the, you know, the flyer, or in the, you know, trying to get people to come. I love that because it's the connection, and people will relate to that, so.
Basic communication principles, speak the other person's language, let them know you understand. You feel, you have empathy, you understand their pain. You've been there, you've seen it, you've done it.
I know what that problem is, and so you can, I specifically addressed the issues of that their problems are. Another person in our group talked about doing, incorporating the MIT into there, which I thought was pretty, pretty good too.
Absolutely. Keep bringing them back to what we're trying to accomplish here. Great, wonderful. I know Jonathan wants to show something, so I want to go ahead and let's move on. Hopefully Jonathan, you'll share that in a minute, but we're gonna move on. How do we follow up with our clients? So now we've got the descriptions, we've got the messages, we need to follow up. We're going to give you a little poll, real quick, to check all that apply. So go ahead, and you have a couple minutes, see if you can click, do you send a, click all that apply.
Okay, I'm seeing some votes come in. Very good. This is multiple choice, you can click as many as you do.
And I'd like to see what the other means. What else do they do?
Yeah.
I will take chocolate.
Very good, very good. Okay, just about ready to close it up, and you got.
Yeah, I think one person is just observing, so that's good. Sending a thank you, 69% of us. Using humor, yeah, be careful with that. We thought you were dead, no. Email to check in, I love that. Sometimes I just put checking in in the subject line, I'm not sure if that's the best subject line, but I don't want people to feel, today I got one from another, one of the people that I subscribe to it. It said 123 in the subject line, and it said, we haven't heard from you. Choose one, and they gave me, you know, 123, you're too busy, you're not interested, this isn't the right time, call me back. Just put it in the reply, it made it so easy for me to reply, like, I'm interested, but it's not, I don't have the bandwidth for it, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Keep communicating, keep sending them information, don't forget about us, keep them on the radar. Second sale, like I did with the, now that you've done the sexual harassment, whether compliance, do you need some OSHA? Do you need lead manufacturing? What else are your needs? Ask for the referral. Who else might benefit from this training? Do they belong to another group? Most HR managers belong to some kind of a group, whether it's SHRM, or NCHRA, or whatever. And you could also buy group email lists, but if you can get them this way, it's much, your way, it's a lot easier. I'd love to know what the others are. We don't have a whole lot of time, but what other methods do you use?
Well, send them another message, but like you find out something that's not even having to do with work, maybe a personal connection you made, like they had a new baby or something, you just, like just little personal things that show that you care about them as a human being, not just another client.
I have a friend of mine, she does this so well, but she's a real people person. She'll get to know that they love golf, and she'll send them like, oh, there's a golf tournament, has nothing to do with training, right? But she gets tons of work from these people, because she's always saying, hey, I was thinking of you, that you might be interested in this, hey, thanks. So again, there's that reciprocity. You gave me something, you thought about me, I'm gonna put you top of the list when I need, have a need.
Or extend a book, send a book or something, just say, hey, I thought of you when I saw this. And this one person had an interesting name, and I found a shopping bag with her person's name on it. Next time I came into training, I gave her the bag, and that like.
That's so cool.
So one of the things that we do to follow up, we have the participants in the class write down how the training that they took, is how they're gonna apply that at their work site. And so what we do is, after the class, we will email those replies to the business so that they can see how each one of their employees have said about the training and how they're gonna actually do the application.
Nice.
That's a neat connection of.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, closes that, I love that, it closes the feedback loop. And one thing too, is that if you do a post-survey that's online, like a Survey Monkey, now this could backfire you, backfire if people don't like the training. But if you can have them fill that in and send it as a report, sometimes that really helps the training manager to say, look, we offered this training, this is what employees said that, how they benefited. So it makes the HR manager, or whoever authorized the training, look good. And that's what you always want to do. Make their job easier, make them look good.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Ready to move on? Oh, there we go, all right. So actually, before we go to the closing, Jonathan, did you want to share the screen? Did you want to show what you showed us this morning? Does that, for you? Idea, okay?
Here, I'm gonna stop Cher.
Okay.
There, so Jonathan's.
Jonathan, he says he did this in a half an hour, we don't believe him, but he's very creative, and he saw a model, and he just kind of, you know, use other people's models. When you see something that works, borrow from it.
So I'll just set this up before I share real quick. So one of our trainers did a training for a client last week, and afterwards they put together this little mini-site using Google Sites that had, it was interactive, it had some links to the slide decks, to a recording, and then to a summary video recording that encapsulated in 30 minutes the whole three-hour training. And it had different links, it was just really well done, and she sent that as a follow-up to the client. And I was like, oh my gosh, that's amazing, I definitely want to do more of that kind of thing. So I thought, let me just try this out, I've never used Google Sites. So in under 30 minutes, you can do something like this, let me just share my screen here. And I am not a website designer, so I'll just show you real quick what I made. Let me know when you can see that. Put a thumbs up if you can see that now. All right, so yeah, I just put up, if we were gonna do something for this training, you have a logo area at the back. You could have links to the different sections of what you did. This can be a carousel with a recording thing, with revolving images, you can put bios here. You can have a section for resources. There's different drag and drops you can do, so let me show you the backend super quick. You can actually insert all different kinds of things here, if I just put this in, then I can just build different sections, you can add pages, there's different themes. So just an example of something you could do, especially if you had an ongoing training with a particular client for a longer period of time, you could start building a repository, a little library for them of what you've done for them that people could access. So that's my 30-second kind of share on something I thought one of our trainers did really well that I want to do more of.
So Jonathan, Emilio, Emiliano's asking, can you share your, can you share your template? But I think, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I literally built this in under 30 minutes. I'll try to, the template itself, once you start, it's super easy, so let me think what I can do to share with you what I did, okay? And I'll send something out to the group, because I'm sure there's others who've done this far better than me. This is my first 30 minutes to ever try this.
And I thought that was pretty, as Mina said, pretty impressive, all right. So, thank you all for joining us today. In closing, I love Jonathan always says this, people don't buy training, they buy the results of the training. And as you go forth after today, how well are you articulating your unique value proposition? How well are your messages addressing the client's pain points? How well do your results match the client's expectations? Do they get what they think they are going to get? And does it make a difference? How so? Is there any way to quantify that with a before or after, pre and post survey? Or just the results? Are they retaining clients? Has their scrap work gone down?